Sir, um, we will have our new trustees in unison say the pledge of allegiance. You may start as well.
Pledge allegiance to the village. I am the state of the into the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
So, uh, before we, uh, move on. First, congratulations, uh, but three and also Sarah's face. Thank you very much and great things for me this, uh, next two years and welcome the board. Now we'll get started here. Katie, I'm sure you have everyone listed here. Ready to roll here. So next here, I will look for a motion in a second. The minutes, the March seventeenth, twenty twenty five village board meeting. Uh, we look to file the twelve nineteen or twelve nine twenty twenty four working air commission. The, uh, two nineteen twenty twenty five parks and recreation board. The, uh, three eleven twenty twenty five public safety committee meetings minutes. March twelfth, sorry, the three twelve twenty twenty five architectural review board minutes as presented.
Voting to approve.
Corrections on this. Um, Andrew?
On the village board minutes. Uh, page five. Paragraph from the bottom. Yep. Okay. And then on page six. Uh, paragraph one and paragraph two. Uh, the company, the, the drone company is D J I like jelly as opposed to G.
Very good. Katie, you good with that?
Six, six.
Page six, it's paragraph one and paragraph two on the top of page six. Um, they're kind of in the middle of the paragraph, but company is E J I said it G. Yep.
Very good. Motion in a second on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh. That motion carries. Very good. Okay. So we're going to vote a person's request and we heard actually, uh, have a little change. Uh, present at this president by the president. Um, we are going to have three minutes to speak, uh, starting here. I want everybody to know this is not tonight is not a public hearing. We're not holding a public hearing on anything, but if you wish to speak on an item that's on the agenda or any other item, we're very happy to have you get up here and speak. Um, we would ask that you come to the dais at your balcony with your name and, uh, your address. And if we happen to listen to you, there will be no buzzer at three o'clock. Right three minutes. Please simply say thank you very much. We absolutely agree. Right with that, we wish to speak on this. Any idea?
I have Elizabeth Miller here to speak.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Mueller. Hi guys, um, I'm with Grafton area chamber of commerce. I want to congratulate Kevin and Sarah. Good to see you. Um, and I just want to encourage any of you, um, that would like to come and sit in at the chamber and just talk about what you're doing, what we're doing. We've always had a great partnership. I think Sarah probably is one of the best that knows all about that. Um, but we would welcome you to set a time and come in and talk. So I know several of you have done that, um, but several of you haven't. So we just welcome you to come in and continue the partnership. So thank you for serving.
Very good. All right, Mr. Herbert, please come in. Again, I know who you are. I know where you live, but your record, you state them.
Hopefully I'll remember too. Bill Herbert, nine oh seven seventeen avenue in Grafton. Um, it's just a couple of brief comments. It's on the agenda items relating to the post reconstructions project. That was sixty. Uh, I think that you ended up getting the letter that I wrote to the O T and got the response. You know where I, I stand on it. I'm all for bike, bike lanes. I'm all for bike uses of bikes. Um, I just think this is a, 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 a bad place to put bike lane. I've talked to many others who they, they think that this is, um, it's all good and done and said and done in the right places, but this is not the right place for a bike lane, given the content that we have and the fact that it's going to get worse. We all know it's going to get worse before it gets better. So there are alternate routes around that. We can get bikes around, but I think, um, the most important thing that came out of the D O T correspondence is that it's not required that like we be, uh, uh, installed eventually this project. Um, I get the D O T's desire to bike lanes. I, I'm not yet, I added a line near that, but, but right, at the right time, this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure everybody certainly considered your comments or any of the description. All right. Next, does this present a positive? Confirming the village board committee commission and board's plan to from the April twenty fifth to April twenty three. April twenty thirty six, the motion second. All right, we're motion in a second. The discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much for that. A couple of things that we wanted to do against over here. Speaking at the meeting, I knew there was quite a bit of discussion at the candidate forum and other things. To forward, uh, you know, we want to encourage our citizens to speak at these meetings, the appropriate. So our agenda, please note that the agenda item, um, after the minutes is people wishing to speak. Um, as we just had here, um, and, uh, Mr. Herbert, you were our first trial here, um, you have three minutes, uh, we have taken the timer on or the buzzer on. Take it three minutes to speak and thank you with the comment. Consideral consideration will be made by the chair to refer any comments to the appropriate committee, um, to the, uh, village administrator. So if we come up with a comment that seem kind of makes sense that we push that over to the village administrator, village administrator can refer that over to the committee if need be. So you just come here and speak and if you feel like nothing's happening. Um, all speakers will be encouraged to complete a speaking. We're either going to have a card or we're going to have a little signup sheet in the back and we'd like you to put your name and your address and your email address so that we can follow up with you electronically and to say thank you for your comments and give you a thank you just to let you, that you work hard. So we'll work through that process in the next couple of meetings and we've already spoken with Katie about this. We'll generally be in comment with you, but again, if you don't fill out the, the board, um, you're probably not going to get a thank you for coming to the meeting and speaking, uh, which we think is important and is part of our outreach to you to let you know how much we do appreciate you speaking. Um, uh, all speakers will speak at the podium, um, and village, uh, employees, uh, who speak, uh, village employees, uh, will also speak for the podium when requested by the chair or the village administrator. So for example, tonight, if we need Eric to speak on something and you think it's important, please ask me, I'll ask Jesse to bring that, um, that employee to the dais to speak. Just the agenda items, um, this is one thing I want to make really clear. All of you as trustees can determine an agenda item. We don't, no issue with that. Um, I don't have the ability to come forward and say, I want this as an agenda item for state statutes. That the agenda is generally set by the committees, um, and what we need to do. With that said, if you have a suggestion for an agenda item that's really bugging you, I'd ask that you put it in writing to myself and the village administrator via email. What we will do is we will put that request as an agenda item upcoming meeting so that the whole board can decide if in fact they want to discuss this item. So we can move forward to bring it up as an agenda item. So we all have the ability to weigh in on, uh, what we think might be good for the village or what we might not think would be good for the village. Two last things here, uh, please respect the deformed of the meeting by asking the chair or the floor before speaking. I know we want to speak right away. But please let me, um, note that who wants to speak, select and process through this old people mind to, um, understand that, uh, I'll have the, uh, call you up to be able to speak. Lastly, per Robert's rules, trustees are allowed to speak once on an item. Um, and that means we go round robin. If you forget about something, you want to address it, please raise your hand and we'll have a second round for everybody. It's all about fairness and equity when we speak. So let me just some of the things we're going to roll out for twenty five, twenty, uh, twenty five, twenty six. And if there's any questions, as always, please send me an email so we can address it at a future meeting. Next item here will be resolution commending, um, Clarissa, Rissy, um, on a, uh, on her retirement and years of service to the village. I'll look for a offer, a motion in a second.
Author.
I'll make the motion. I'll second. We have offer motion in a second. Um, I don't think we're having any discussion on this, so I'll just ask for a vote. All in favor say aye. Rissy, get up here. We're going to embarrass you. Come on onto the podium. I'm going to try to speak a little loud here because this is a long. It's like really long. So those of you in the back row who are falling asleep, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll come over and interview later. But resolution number zero zero four of twenty twenty five series, resolution commanding Clarissa Madonna on her retirement and years of service to the village of Grafton. Whereas Clarissa, Rissy Madonna is retiring from the village of Grafton employment on May second, twenty twenty five, after diligently serving the people of the village of Grafton and the community for thirty four years. And whereas Rissy began her employment with the G P D Grafton Police Department in nineteen eighty four as a police dispatcher and progressed in her career to become dispatcher court clerk and ultimately was promoted to the role of administrative assistant to the chief of police. And whereas during her tenure, Rissy worked for three chiefs of police, three? All three of them and was integral part of Grafton Police Department and community by her service as a highly regarded dispatcher court clerk, communication training officer and administrative assistant to the chief of police and whereas during her tenure as administrative assistant to the ch- chief of police, Rissy was trusted confidential assistant to the chief of police and was, had always carried herself with integrity, taking on any task, including time agency coordinator, Wisconsin Department of Revenue, State Debt Collection Specialist, department training coordinator, law enforcement standards, board, training and standards, department record auditor, assisted in the rewrite and implementation of all department policies and procedures, creation of the department annual report, budget and capital improvement plan, development and management, development of agenda and related documents and minute taken for monthly Grafton, uh, public safety committee meetings and department quarter master and we have like three more instances. Whereas during her tenure, Rissy earned several chiefs challenge coins awarded for respect and accountability as well as recognition for three consecutive Wisconsin Department of Justice time agency one hundred percent compliance audits, representing unprecedented perfect department compliance with crime information bureau policy and procedure for keeping and protection technically, technical security and criminal information records. And whereas Rissy always represented the village of Grafton with the highest degree of professionalism while providing oversight, guidance to fellow employees as both dispatcher and member of administration. And whereas Rissy, uh, whereas it appropriate to recognize uh, the accomplishments and years of service that Rissy were given to the village of Grafton. Now therefore be resolved that the whole of the village board of the village of Grafton is hereby acknowledged with sincere appreciation and gratitude over thirty four years of dedicated service that Rissy has provided to the community. Be a further result that the village board and village staff of Grafton of Wisconsin do hereby wish Rissy the very best on her retirement and in all of her future endeavors, resolve this fifteenth day of April twenty twenty five. Congratulations.
In accord with the village's recognition program, based upon Rissy's years of service and dedication to the community upon her retirement, we do present a ceremonial, um, street sign on behalf of the village of Grafton. We couldn't quite get the pop to B S in here. Like Rissy, you did do it your way with the utmost level of professionalism. courteous, uh, customer service to the folks out in the public and just keeping the guys in mind. Thank you so much.
All right. So the second one we're going to do here is I'll need a offer a motion in a second for a resolution for Ms. Deborah Brown. May I have an offer motion in a second? All right, offer motion in a second. All in favor say aye. And Deb, come on up here. It reminds me of Duncan Burns song, which is well, you've got a lovely daughter. So, resolution zero zero five, series twenty twenty five, a resolution commending Deborah Brown on her retirement and years of service to the village of Grafton. Whereas Deborah Brown was down, down from employment with the village of Grafton on June first nineteen ninety four. And whereas Deborah served in utility department, truck department, planning department, community development department for over thirty years of employment. And whereas during her tenure with the village, Deborah diligently worked to ensure the highest quality of service and attention were provided to the Grafton community. A major accomplishment was getting the water and wastewater utility back on track and a sound financial ground. And whereas Deborah's accounting experience, record keeping and magical ability to find any document after dropping a hat, well, it didn't, yes, it was a smile, I might add. And whereas Deborah is the epitome of public servant, that epitome of a public servant who represents the village of Grafton, highest degree of professionalism while supporting coworkers and implementing the goals of the respective department with a smile. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the compliment, the accomplishment from years of services that Deborah has given to the village of Grafton. Now therefore be resolved that the whole of the village board of the village of Grafton was hereby acknowledge sincere appreciation and gratitude for the more than thirty years of dedicated service that Deborah Brown has provided to the community and it's further result that the village board and village staff hereby wish Deborah the very best and all of the future Deborah, which was approved by the village of board, village of Grafton. Just heard it live here on fifteenth day of April twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Lot of institutional knowledge, just leaving the village. Debbie was one of the first folks that came up and welcomed me to the village hall when I started back in twenty sixteen. Join me around and make sure I didn't get lost or wander off. Um, your guidance not only to me as an administrator, but also the community wellness department will be missed. And that institution, um, is an integral part of the department as well. Appreciate everything you've done.
To recognize both upon sixty five years of experience. Um, that's, that's a great. A great pride in that and I, I'm very happy that we're able to do that tonight. All right. Next on the item on the agenda is our Arbor Day, uh, our Arbor Day proclamation. Um, I will need a motion in a second to bring this to a vote.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, motion second. Congratulations. That was your first point. Yeah, that's, that's a good start. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. So that, where we are representing, um, proclamation for Arbor Day, a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Very good. The proclamation reads that whereas in eighteen seventy two, J Sterling Morton proposed in the Grafton Board of Air Ecology the special day beside, beside the tree in the trees and whereas this state of productivity was first observed planting more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees can reduce the erosion for precious topsoil by wind and water heating and cooling costs, moderate, moderate temperature, when the air produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuels for our fires and countless other wood. And whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas the village of Grafton has been recognized as a tree city, USA, by the National Arbor Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore I then, the Lord President of the village of Grafton, hereby proclaim April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, that Arbor Day in the village of Grafton urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees, woodlands and to support our village community forest program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well being of present and future generations. This dated today, it's come from the date of Grafton, Wisconsin, this fifteenth day of April twenty twenty five. Thank you very much. All right, Jesse, let's go to memorandum of understanding between the village of Grafton and the O C F D for administrative support, to accommodate human resources.
Absolutely. This is a memorandum of understanding between the village and the newly formed Ozaki Central Fire Department. Over the course of two board meetings, the O C F D board, um, reviewed and considered this memorandum of understanding or agreement for the village of Grafton to provide services on a temporary basis to help with the startup of this new, uh, department. These services under this particular memorandum of understanding include human resources support, finance support, payroll support and general administrative, um, help. That being said, at their March nineteenth meeting, the Ozaki Central Fire Department Board unanimously approved the attached memorandum of understanding. I'd like to walk through just a couple of the, um, highlights, if you will. Um, the agreement sets forth with a standard set of recitals noting that this agreement is between the village. Um, the, um, O C F D is an intergovernmental entity supported by the village of Grafton, village of Saukville, town of Grafton and town of Saukville. They are the charter members, if you will. The newly formed fire department does require some administrative support for finance, accounting, human resources and payroll services from the village of Grafton during this initial startup period. That said, the village of Grafton is in good faith and is willing to and able to enter into an agreement with the fire department to provide said services. Um, one nice thing with this is that the paperwork is actually getting caught up with reality. So this M O U actually sets forth what's happening today. Um, so that is kind of the, uh, uh, blessing here in disguise, if you will. That said, the O C F D responsibilities include such things as working in conjunction with the village, timely communication to ensure that we can process their payroll accurately and timely. Um, what their responsibilities are, including such things as, um, working towards obtaining, um, financial software, et cetera. Um, the village responsibilities and it is important to note that some of these responsibilities can be carried over if needed. However, there is a significant number of these responsibilities in that anything payroll, insurance or Wisconsin retirement system related would actually have to be taken on by the Ozaki Central Fire Department by December thirty first. Otherwise, all of their employees would remain under the village of Grafton umbrella and hence would, um, uh, reduce the flexibility for the fire department to, um, tailor make their benefits package or how they, um, provide different, uh, benefits to their, um, employees, more fire business or, um, fire industry specific. Whereas now they are village of Grafton employees for twenty twenty five. And with that flexibility, they could tailor it more, as I mentioned, to the fire service industry whereby they could take on unique, um, benefits that wouldn't necessarily apply to the general pool of employees, uh, here in the village. Um, that said, one of the major significant points of this agreement, I will take you to page four of the draft memorandum of understanding and you'll note the track change um, under the term language of the term. This would be line one fifty. The initial, uh, wording was that the term of the memorandum of understanding shall commence January one, twenty twenty five and expire no later than December thirty first. This hard stop was troublesome. And I understand, uh, why. In some cases, that hard stop is necessary, as I had just explained with regards to things like the Wisconsin retirement system or insurance benefits, um, those sorts of things. However, there are items in here that if needed, can be carried over with an extension of this memorandum of understanding if needed. So the, uh, language being proposed and sent forward by the O C F D board is that the term of this M O U shall commence January one, twenty twenty five and shall be revisited no later than September twentieth, twenty twenty five for any necessary amendments. Those amendments could be changes to the services offered. Um, this, that those amendments could be an extension to the memorandum of understanding. But what this does is this language sets forth an accountability on both sides. Not only by the fire department to make progress towards gaining that, uh, certi- or not certification, but recognition as part of the Wisconsin retirement system program. Um, shopping for an insurance benefit package that they would like to offer as their, as a standalone organization. Um, establishing the financial software. Um, that said, with, uh, this accountability here of having to revisit this agreement, that gave a level of comfort to not only the fire board, but frankly, myself as the administrator here overseeing the staff here in Grafton, helping out with these functions. The village of Grafton should not be looked at as a permanent solution to these issues. We are here to help support and start up the O C F D. However, we are not a permanent solution, very similar to the discussion we had with regards to the, um, vehicle repair and maintenance, uh, memorandum of understanding. So with that, um, this is unanimously recommended as presented, uh, to the board this evening for your consideration.
Motion in a second to bring this forward.
Jesse, so, I just want to confirm this was approved by the O, O C F D.
Unanimously recommended by the O C F D board to the village board, yes.
If there are changes, definitely.
Yes, it would. Yes, it would.
Page two, with other eyes.
Good, thank you. All right.
Just clarification of what Amy said. So, um, under the new term of the M O U being revisited and later than September twentieth, what, what happens there will then determine, I have it on page three with the finance and accounting number five, terminating fire department employees in the village payroll system as of December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Since that language would impact, um, here, um, section one, the O C F D responsibilities would also impact section two, the village responsibilities, as all of those would be reviewed from both sides of the equation, if you will. Um, what's been completed? What needs to be completed? What may, they may need some additional help with, and that is the point of revisiting it. So it would be a review for both sides of the agreement, uh, both the fires. Correct. And it would have to come back. Yep. Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you, Katie, just breaking through your, 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 your. Okay, so, um, Jesse?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll be happy to introduce this at a high level. However, I would have to turn it and defer to, uh, clerk Olson for the specifics of it. In short, it's been some time since, uh, this portion of our regulations, uh, has been updated. With that, the clerk wanted to update the regulations to reflect current conditions, um, not only with regards to legal precedents, but also state standards. Um, and update accordingly, one of the big updates with this would be the implementation of a late fee due to, uh, issues with previous businesses within the community. Um, consistently being late year over year with their renewal process. Um, that is one of the primary functions of this update, but otherwise it is to, um, get to and modernize our, um, licensing fees in accord with current market conditions. Um, and for any more granular questions, I would defer to clerk Olson.
Very good. Uh, let's, Kate, do you have anything to add before I bring you something? Very good. Looks like the red line fees are pretty self explaining. Great.
License fee survey that. Oh, sorry, just for, um, just keep looking at the outcome of license fee survey that was provided for the, uh, surrounding communities. And then with what's being proposed, uh, it seems fair as far as a little uptick in pricing for the fees and whatnot, especially given the other, when you're looking at the other comparable cities like Washington and other communities with our level of, uh, population. So I appreciated that information being shared to give us a deeper look as to why the fees were being implemented and how they can compare to other communities.
Very good.
Yes, I still have a question about the late fees in terms of retail licenses. Is there? I see that is, says a hundred dollars on here. Is that? Yes. Is that to make sure that we don't have any issues with that? Because I don't see other areas have similar fees in that terms.
Yes. In the past, we have had issues with previous establishments not turning in their liquor licenses, which has resulted in emergency village board meetings and scrambling to get information out so the doors wouldn't have to close on the establishments. So we're trying to prevent that instance of them potentially having to pay even more money in fines.
All right, thank you.
It seems that the majority of the municipalities have a one-year term. What is the advantage for us to say at a two-year term?
There is no advantage. It's really up to municipality. You can't have more than two years. So your limit is either a one-year term or a two-year term. We've, the Village of Grafton has always had an added two-year term. We can certainly change that if that's the, for me, of the board to do so. I'm open to suggest.
Does it make more work for you?
Yes. Yes, it does. But it's nothing that we couldn't handle. I mean, we basically were a department of two, so that's a, that makes more work for us, but I would say on average, the issue about two hundred licenses a year, and that's a two-year license. So it would make it four hundred licenses every year that we would be issuing, so. But it's not within, or beyond our capabilities.
Okay. So your motion in a second. Should we move the updated schedule of fees for opening will commence April fifteenth, twenty twenty one? Would you favor saying, hey, opposed? Areas. Okay. Let's talk about review recommendations in Wisconsin sixty repaving First Avenue to Tenth Avenue. The urban design alternative.
I will provide a very brief introduction to this. However, Assistant Administrator Wolf and Director Thomas were the direct staff liaisons with the DOT on this project, just by way of introduction. So I would turn it over to them to get into more of the detailed background information. That said, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation is proposing to repave approximately zero point six miles of Highway sixty between First Avenue and Tenth Avenue here in the Village of Grafton. Proposed improvements include concrete replacement of pavement, concrete curb and gutter replacement, sidewalk curb ramp reconstruction meet ADA standards, traffic signal replacement, and added left turns lanes at First Avenue intersection, and railroad crossing reconstruction for vehicles. There'd be no changes to the existing street width. So that is a very high-level look at what the project could entail. With that, as mentioned, Director Thomas and Assistant Administrator Wolf were the lead staff liaisons, working closely with WISDOT, staying abreast of the project. Public information meeting has been held. Mr. Weiner is with us via Zoom from the Department of Transportation as well.
Very good.
I just want to clarify that Kevin's here representing Collins and he is the DOT's consultant. Unfortunately, I believe that we're having some technical difficulties with Kevin's microphone. He can hear us. We cannot hear him. I think Jesse is monitoring the chat, just in case Kevin has anything to add. Okay. I want to start by taking a step back to twenty twenty two. We were working with the DOT at that point in the scoping, initial scoping phase of the project. And as with some state government projects, it was not the most streamlined process. Unfortunately, the initial design process was somewhat disjointed. At that time, there were two issues, parking and the bike lanes. Having parking on Highway sixty was communicated to village staff as an option, where the DOT requested village input and preference. The second issue about bike lanes was less clear. They did ask for input, but it was less clear about what role the village would have on that particular design issue. Parking on the north side of the street was determined to be a priority following the convention meeting that year. Two travel lanes are a requirement, one traveling in both directions. And that partnered or in in combination with the parking lane on the north side of the street leaves ten feet of roadway width remaining. This is not wide enough to accommodate any other vehicle lane, but it was divided into bike lane, five-foot bike lane in both directions, which was consistent with the village's bike and pedestrian plan. Staff at that time thought that we were meeting both parking and bike holes with this design alternative. An option, as Jesse mentioned, we had a public information meeting in March and presented a single option, option number one, that was included with the packet. An option with a turn lane was not presented at the public information meeting because a shared turn lane was not warranted based on traffic counts and lack of crashes. And staff knew that the priority was on parking on the north side of the street. And a center turn lane design does not accommodate or would be able to allow a parking lane. It was only after the March thirteenth public information meeting that it was communicated to village staff that bike accommodations are required to be part of the road design due to the use of federal funds for this project. Since the March public information meeting, a resident requested that the village consider a design alternative that includes turn lanes in this portion of Highway sixty. And the staff report included in the packet includes those two options. The first option has two eleven-foot travel lanes and an eight-foot parking lane on the north side of the street, and two five-foot bike lanes on both sides of the street. Option two includes two eleven-foot travel lanes, a twelve-foot two-way left turn lane, also known as a twill, and three-foot shoulders. Both, again, both of these options meet minimum DOT requirements. Finally, I just want to note that the village and the DOT have provided responses to several questions regarding state and federal bike accommodation requirements, cost estimates, and public info documentation. I'm happy to review any of that information as directed by the board. We certainly don't want to take up our time to review all. Happy to answer any questions. Director Thomas is here, and Kevin is available for those who have questions.
Okay, so what we're going to do to bring this to a discussion of the board is that what we're really looking for here, as I understand, is a correction to provide to the DOT either the support of design option one or design option two. Correct in that?
Correct.
So at this point in time, I'd like to bring to the table a motion in a second to direct the staff to communicate to the village for its support of design option one for repaving Wisconsin sixty, Washington Avenue from First Avenue to Tenth Avenue to Wisconsin DOT. What we'll do here is we'll take a vote. Once the discussion takes place here, we'll take a vote on option one. If that does not pass, I believe we would take a look at, then I believe we would be looking to option two. Am I correct in that, Mike? Is there a reasonable way to do that? Proceed with this.
Seems like inappropriate unless you want to, you know, ask for a motion from the board or however you want, but that would make sense.
Okay. Let's, let's start with this motion to see if, in fact, we have interest in option one after discussion, and then if not, then we will ask the question of option two. We'll revise the All right, so right up on the table, and we'll be through motion in a second.
I'll send him.
Okay, Andy. I'm anxious to share this. Andy?
Okay, my concern about this is I have, I have two concerns. Option one, having a parking lane on the north side of the street. I believe that that's an appropriate place to have parking on the road because more of the residents are on the north side of the street than the south side of the street. The south side of the street has St. Paul, Robbins Place, Cemetery, and St. Joe Cemetery. We have an issue that if we, we have to basically stay in the road that as it exists because we're not going to be able to widen the road. I need the road through that area. So of the options, either one of the options gives me what I think that we actually need, which I think they have to kind of look at the possibility of adding additional left turns in in the area between the railroad tracks and First Avenue, not just redesigning the First Avenue intersection to include left turn lanes, but perhaps left turn lanes at appropriate intervals. So like, for example, push the roadway out at lose the parking, push the roadway out perhaps at Sixth Street or at Fifth Street to make left turns there. Make left turn lanes there. Sixth probably would be the better option because of the industrial area towards the back, going south on Sixth. That the trucks would be able to use that as a left turn option, but then you'd be eliminating parking in that particular section of the roadway to create that. I think that that would add to a calming effect of the traffic by done appropriately and would also accommodate parking in the north side of the street, which I, there are areas on the street where we do need to accommodate that parking. I think more so in the area from Fifth going east rather than west of it would be my opinion. So I'm not an extreme fan of the bike lane on Highway sixty. I know that the state is very much pushes multi-mode transportation. So they're, they're talking pedestrian walk, they're talking vehicles, and they're talking bicycles. So I know that that, that is kind of their flavor for the Department of Transportation. My concern again is the loss of parking. So if I had to swallow one of these two options, I guess the less bitter one was option one.
Thank you, Andrew.
Jessica, what was the feedback from the residents the first time?
The initial time I went to the plan commission, the residents strongly supported parking on at least the north side of the road. I think the, the addition of bike lanes does help to improve the traffic flow because I think it gives the bikers a place in the roadway. I think the bikers don't have to dodge cars or people or vice versa. And it makes our sidewalks more safer for pedestrians. There are stats that show that having those turn lanes, those left turn lanes in the center have caused more head-on collisions because individuals don't know how to utilize that properly. I actually contacted A plus Driving School and talked to an instructor there because I was curious to know how they educate the student drivers on bike lanes. The instructor I spoke with said that students are taught online and behind the wheel, the importance of bike lanes and how to safely maneuver them. And that for students in today's world, having bike lanes is quite the norm. The instructor is seeing more and more bike lanes through our communities and expects to continue to see more of them as time goes on. And she felt as a driving instructor, she feels that the roads are easier to navigate when everyone is in their place. So for me, I would be in favor of option one.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to discuss it? Andy?
I was here for the March meeting, and I listened to persons that were here for that, and their concern was with having the bike lane. It's just going to be a big problem for them and trying to get out of their driveways. I'm not a big favor, in favor of option two. Reason that Amy has pointed out, but I also echo what Andy has said too. They have a problem. Some of the bikers just drive, brought all of that. Not following the rules of the road, for one thing, and that's the problem I have. There's going to be a lot more bikes here where we have a road to the north and to the south where the bikers can get from one side of town to the other. So I, I'd say I'm just not a real big fan of the bike.
Sure. To finish on that, I would like to second what Mr. Armstrong just vocalized, which is that the bike lanes, in my opinion, would be better suited on either Beach Street or Sprint Street, I believe it is, one block north of Highway sixty. I live just off of First Avenue. I'm on one, two, four, four Audubon Avenue. I've lived over there for seventeen years. And I see the bike lane on First Avenue going out to Highway sixteen, the lights up there where the left turn lane is going to be. The proposed project, two things, in March, when I saw the layout, absolutely love the left turn lane at the light there at First Avenue. Shout out to the DOT. I also think it's really great that we're adding the pedestrian warning signals at the railroad tracks. Lots of folks walk downtown and to see those being implemented on the sidewalk side for traffic train safety, that's great to see as well. However, with that said, with the biking situation, the bike lanes from northbound on First Avenue, there is no reason why they wouldn't be able to be diverted onto Beach. And then when you go down Beach and it intersects with Ninth Avenue, there's a sign there that says, you know, bike lane to the right. When Jero is in town and folks are gearing up for Jero, all those folks are being redirected down Beach or Sprint Street. I very rarely see cyclists on Highway sixty. It's a lot of bandwidth within that street. Pedestrians, bicyclists getting hit with traffic is a serious concern for me. Additionally, driving during work rush hours and having to make a turn on Fifth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, Eighth Avenue, it can be treacherous. So again, I would be more in favor of option two with some proposed turn lanes. And also, again, I understand that it's to be heavily considered for bicycling on, on new construction and considering the, the major roadway, it's too dangerous. It's too dangerous for cyclists to have bicycle lanes on Highway sixty. So I strongly implore us to consider option two and to find another space for our bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to voice my concerns also about bicycle lanes on Highway sixty. Again, like Mr. Armstrong, I was there at the meeting, heard a lot of vocal opposition to it for people who were living on that area. I would like to also point out that the interurban trail does already have lines up on North Avenue going from like twelfth to no, the first. And then also some areas on Beach Street already. So we do think that keeping the bike lanes in those sections would be a little better than putting it into this more dangerous area.
Sure. I really like what Andy said about possibly getting some left turn lanes in designated spots where there might be more opportunity to turn left. I, I feel like the best thing we could do was try to find a hybrid between these two options because I think it would be great if we were able to incorporate some of those two or three left turn lanes, like Andy was saying. I think that parking in that section, in that section that Andy said, parking on the north side is necessary. And I don't think a lot of people use parking farther west of that. I worry, you know, when you look at these diagrams and you see the two cars going in opposite directions, you see the two bikers, and you see the parking lane. You know, there is a rule that says cars cannot veer off to the right of the lane to a bike lane when they want to pass in front of them, stop waiting to turn left. I don't think any of us would know that unless we looked it up, and I think if somebody said thirty, they've tried to go around the car in front of them and it stopped to turn left. Now we're going to have, also have more benefits traveling east and west. I think, I think it's more dangerous. I, I would hope that we could do some kind of hazard. But I, I, I can't approve option one, as I said, I feel.
Couple of things. I've done, put a bit of research on this over the last couple of weeks. I don't really like the idea of bike lanes, personally. I think First Avenue, where the resident people initially listed in the commission meeting in twenty twenty two, it's safer for us to send people from First Avenue to the north. in the commission meeting in twenty twenty-two, it's safer for us to send people from First Avenue to the north of Highway sixty. I'm researching this issue issue. And I think the state has a fairly good idea here in giving due consideration to establishing driveways, pedestrian pathways and along the highway construction. First of all, they control they control the person in this one. And I I believe they're they're going to do whatever they kind of want to do with this, given the fact that we have multiple things that are working against us. In two thousand fifteen, on December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, after five um five consecutive meetings, uh there was a fifty-eight page the village bicycle plan. A lot of folks that are sitting here right now are aware of it and some of those actually sat on that committee. And um that bicycle plan looked out many, many years. And there is a and a recommendation for a bike path to go from First Avenue um all the way down to the part of Grafton. In addition, the county is speaking with Mr. Stark yesterday. The county has ideas um on on how to really move um a wider variety of bicycle traffic through downtown and eventually out coming to the onto the parking right. Uh and also to um head into the town and um not having seventeenth or not having Highway sixty with bike lanes certainly sends people in a in a different way. Uh in in addition, we have uh the folks from the county uh interurban advisory council, nosoc tourism council suggesting we consider option one here. Um one of the things we've also got to realize is that bicycle technology has changed quite a bit in the last fifteen years or in the last ten years. And that we have a lot of people on electric powered bicycles, which are capable of up to twenty-eight miles an hour, really keeping up on them. I think that our challenge is, I don't know how many of you have ever ridden on Highway sixty without bike lanes. Uh it it is it is dangerous. And I have, you know, it's it's kind of nice to roll over to the north, but really for me, the quickest way of coming from sendings is to head them in sixty. Save my prayers, get in the left-hand lane and try to turn on Eighth Avenue um to get to get to my house. The challenge with all of that is is that we don't have bike lanes there. It's when people are still going to be using that street for bicycle traffic. Uh they like the signs, but again, we've got to look at how traffic is going to be evolving over the next ten years um as more people, as we have more population, more people are going to be using bikes in different ways. I'm personally conflicted on bike lanes and lanes, but it's clear to me that we just think a lot of times the village coming up with a white can um that bike plan doesn't include those bike lanes. Second thing is, is in twenty twenty-two, when this came before the planning commission, we clearly heard from the residents along Highway sixty that they want parking. And lastly, speaking with people with construction, they don't want the road any wider than it is. And frankly, the state's not planning, the state's planning to really repave this. It's really not a reconstruction, I think, is what I'm hearing. So um I I think I'm gonna have to swallow hard and take option one on this because I think it's it's a safe alternative. Um I'm not sure what we're gonna get with the hybrid because I didn't think that's ever been presented to us by the state. So not really sure what we're gonna do with this. So with that, any further discussion here? Is that all? Your hand first.
Concern I have to when I mentioned it in March was the lack of signage going west from west to eastbound. Um when you are passing the Cedar or Morris Cedar Creek Clinic, it goes um from like thirty-five to twenty-five, right?
Keep some track here, right? If you were saying this state issue, the state is looking at redoing from, if you're talking about that area to the west of, when you're starting to the west of First Avenue.
Yeah.
That's the state process.
Once you hit First Avenue, you hit that light, when you go over the hill, first, third and first, second and third avenues, you don't see another twenty-five mile sign until you're at Fourth Avenue. So another concern I have is speeding as we're coming into town. People are flying into town and that's gonna increase, um you know, concerns for the bicycle lanes there. So just wanted to have that up there.
Sure. Um so I know that this has been talked about for a few years and it's not going to come to fruition for the four or five more years. Um I mean, I I I feel like the, I mean, I would like us to be able to ask us and the DOT to, you know, let's work together in the next few months and try to come up with something. Let's let's try to put another option out there. I mean, I think that that's something that we owe our citizens. Um I think there's a good option that can combine these two and make it safer and still give parking and do a couple of left turn lanes. I mean, I I think we owe that to people and we have time to.
Your preliminary.
I didn't call on you.
I'm sorry.
What would you like to say?
These are preliminary plans, correct?
Well, there's not even been a uh a public hearing on this, which will be coming up with the state. So that that will be coming up later and may I leave?
Sounds right. I would have to defer, excuse me, I would have to defer to Assistant Mission.
Kevin, could you?
Sorry, Jessica, I wasn't able to hear what you were saying. Um could you repeat the question?
Absolutely. Is is the, does the DOT hold public hearings for street repaving projects like this?
So they hold uh public information meetings. So the first meeting that was held in March was to present the proposed concept uh just to get the initial feedback on the, you know, at a preliminary high level. As we get further into the design and we start determining things like driveway impacts, um you know, potential impacts beyond the right of land, people's properties, we would be holding a second uh meeting, um likely sometime around October, where we could get, you know, a little more in-depth on it and answer some of those other questions that were raised at the first meeting.
Thank you. And then also one other question about level of design. Um we've completed thirty percent plans and I understand that you're working on right now trying to get to sixty percent plans. Is that correct? Or at what, at what stage are you in the process? And at what point do you need the village to decide on, to give you direction on a design?
Correct. So um right now we're planning on submitting sixty percent plans in mid-May. We need to have those plans submitted in order to get the approved um environmental document and design report. Um those reports need to be approved approved in order to start the right-of-way process. Um so there's a lot of steps in the schedule that all kind of add up. So when you work backwards from the the twenty twenty-eight construction date, um May is when we need to have the the sixty percent plans done to stay on schedule.
So I get that it's, so I I understand trustee Harback that we are, the construction is very far out. Unfortunately, design decisions need to be made relatively soon.
Okay. One more question.
As a new kid in town here, uh wouldn't these plans have to go to or reviewed or checked out by the Public Works Subcommittee?
Uh Amber, please come up to the desk, please. Jesse, you're okay.
Absolutely.
Just a couple of things to kind of add to where the conversation has gone. No, this is a state road. It is a DOT owned road and they are able to do, you know, what they need to. It could come to Public Works if we wanted to discuss it, share plans, um have a discussion, but there wouldn't be really any decision making at the Board of Public Works level. That makes sense. And then I was just gonna add, Kevin, if you can hear me. I know we've had some design discussion on the topic that came up tonight about adding possible just portions of left turn lanes at maybe one or two other intersections. And I believe there was safety concerns with how that would operate. I don't know if you could address that at all.
Yeah, so uh I'm not saying we we couldn't do that, but we would need to take a look at it, um you know, and lay it out on on a plan. I I think it would create some challenges with how to do those those shifts safely, um while still maintaining the bike lanes. And you know, by the time you put in a turn lane plus a taper, you're you're probably taking out a a full block of parking um on either side of those intersections in order to get those turn lanes in. So I mean, you could still keep some of the parking, but you'd be losing, you know, at least a few blocks of it. And it might create some potential safety concerns with the alignment shifts to um, you know, depending on how we're able to achieve those.
Thanks, Kevin. Then I guess just the last thing I'll add, just based on the conversation. So um I know there's a lot of discussion and lots about bike lanes. Um and there was a lot of information shared from the DOT with everyone about, you know, what their process is for determining if bike lanes are needed. Um and they have, you know, federal guidelines to follow, state guidelines to follow for bike lanes. Um and the only way that they cannot put in some type of bike accommodation on a state road is if you meet certain criteria to say, okay, you do not have to put bike lanes in. You do not need, this roadway does not need any of that criteria to say that bike lanes or bike accommodations of some sort are not needed. So per state and federal guidelines, some sort of bike accommodation is required.
Thank you. Hey. Lisa?
I believe that that that's required, Amber, because we're getting some state assistance. Is that correct? The bike lanes, I'm sorry.
Federal, we're getting them in everything.
Right. So it's it's required, but it's recommended to look at. And if the community feels like it's not necessary or dangerous, then they can make that decision, correct?
So I think Amber just mentioned there are a series of criteria that you have to meet. And if you, and and DOT has determined that this section does not meet the criteria to be exempted from requiring a bike accommodation. It is not a local decision.
Okay. Last call for question. All right. So the motion at hand is to direct staff to communicate village board support for design option one for repaving Wisconsin sixty Washington Avenue from First Avenue to Tenth Avenue to the Wisconsin DOT. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Raise of hands for nay. Okay, four, three, uh that motion carries. All right, on to the next one. For the Board of Public Works, four, four, team, twenty twenty-five, we want some maintenance contract for water towers.
Yes, at a high level, um this is a contract with a service provider for the maintenance of our water towers throughout the village. This is a longer term maintenance contract to ensure that we are able to cycle through our entire inventory of um water tower maintenance. Um Assistant Utility Director Greece is here this evening to be able to speak in greater detail to this. Um it is coming forward with a unanimous recommendation out of Board of Public Works.
Very good. Look for a motion to bring this to discussion to recommend the village board allow utility to enter a nine-year maintenance contract for all water towers that includes major renovations and annual maintenance for no cost, for a cost not to exceed nine hundred sixty thousand thirty dollars. If the initial contract here not to exceed forty-one thousand five hundred dollars would be approved. Motion in second, please. Motion in second, discussion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye. Polling carries. Roof, uh WWTP roof replacement package. Looks like Rita Morton, who did the village board authorize the replacement of main utility building roof uh by Paul Crandall and Associates for the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand twenty-five dollars. Motion in second, Jesse, any anything?
Very, very self-explanatory. This is a budgeted item uh for a roof replacement project at our utility.
All in favor. Carries. Public Works this evening approved a twenty twenty-six street design.
By way of introduction, uh this is our effort to get out in front of and be very proactive in designing our twenty twenty-six street utility um projects uh that we have tentatively planned. With this design work completed early, the final um um approvals can be put in place and bidding can happen a little bit earlier than previously. And we are looking to um get favorable pricing by being able to bid a little bit earlier. That and this is a pretty significant um contract for design work. And so we want to make sure there's plenty of time to be able to um have this design work done and staff review of said design. Um this is a service contract uh with a not to exceed. Uh it is coming forward with a unanimous recommendation from Board of Public Works. For any specific or granular questions, I would defer to Director Thomas.
Very good. Uh motion and second, please bring this to the table for discussion. The motion in second, I'm gonna Dave. Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor. Say aye. Opposed? We should carry. Village administrators report, Jesse.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh village staff has become aware of a utility billing error that recently occurred as a result of a software update. Um staff is in meetings with our software provider Civic Systems to determine the extent of the errors and then to correct any that are found. It is estimated that approximately five hundred customers may have been impacted. Anyone impacted will receive a direct communication from the village on how we will rectify any error in this uh uh particular situation. Uh liquor license renewal packets will be distributed uh by the clerk's office later this week. This is the kickoff to the annual renewal process. Uh the farmstead on Falls development has broken ground. They have indicated that it will be up to a twenty-month construction process. This is the multifamily development on the northeast corner of Falls and Port Road. As previously mentioned, the traffic signals are slated for, at that intersection for this summer as well. Um that is a village project independent of the farmsteads project, but nonetheless, as part of the overall development in that area, looking to um improve traffic conditions. Uh village departments have submitted the cap, their uh capital improvement plan proposals for review at a staff level. Committee presentations will be forthcoming within the next month. And ultimately, the final draft capital improvement plan will be presented to the village board. A capital improvement plan is a five-year plan that outlines the possible large-scale projects and expenditures for the village. It looks to identify potential projects. Uh generally speaking, the rule of thumb is anything over five thousand dollars in value and a lifespan of five or more years uh would constitute a capital uh item. This five-year plan does not commit the village to any particular project, the timing of any particular project, nor does it commit the village to any particular funding source. It is a plan simply to identify large-scale expenditures that would be uh or could be uh forthcoming in the coming years. Uh lastly, and I would argue most importantly, um since this is her last village board meeting with us, I would like to take a moment to publicly acknowledge and thank Public Works Director Amber Thomas for her eight and three-quarter years of service to the village of Grafton. That's a little bit of an inside joke. Has been the epitome of public service and professionalism on behalf of the village of Grafton during her time here. She has overseen the road program um for many years, has improved our practices not only on the day-to-day level, but also just on our general construction oversight and how to carry out large projects, making the village much more efficient and covering more ground every day. She has made her department better and that will be missed. Her leadership, professional expertise, and most of all, her can-do attitude with a smile will be missed for sure. Amber, thank you very much for your years of service. It is greatly appreciated. That is all for my report.
Amber. Welcome. All right. Our next item here is a little issue of operator's license. I'm sure we all looked at that for a motion to approve the operator licenses as presented. Motion approved.
Second.
Uh motion in second, any discussion on this? Yes, sir. Can you speak? This what?
No, the um it is the person is listed and then the place that they're gonna be working is listed second, so.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Carries for bill, things come back and forth when. Thank you for your questions on this. I'm looking for a minute and a second to bring this to the table for discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder for everybody, I really appreciate getting these questions up by later this Sunday, so we can get the answers up to you on Monday. That's been greatly appreciated, uh, any questions here at all, um, other than most. I'm gonna thank you for those questions, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Carries, at this point in time, I'd like to have a motion in second, if it would be in full session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point one, nineteen point eight-five. One, competitive bargaining matters, what the bargaining agreement, I'll need a motion second and then vote by the whole.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, I'm gonna start at this end.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we are going to turn the table now and uh, all in favor, we think you're gonna need to.
We, we're gonna need a good twenty, twenty-five minutes to roll through the review of the tentative agreement that we have reached with the police association. And then we will come out of closed session for action on that tentative agreement.